City Council Meeting of March 24, 2014, with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please do roll call?
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
George Pond.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes of February 24 or March 3? We do have one?
May I move to approve the minutes of February 24 and March 3, 2014?
If there's no changes. Are you seconding? Yes?
I think I had one clarification on the minutes.
Okay.
Allow me to get to that section. And it's pretty minor, because I think our clerk does a great job. But somewhere here... On page six of the minutes, down under the motion by... It says, "Council Fitzgerald", and I would change that to be "Council Member Fitzgerald", with your permission.
The clerk has signified that she will make that correction.
Thank you.
Mr. DeTulio, something else?
We just needed a second.
Okay.
Second.
All right, the motions have been approved and seconded as changed. Is there... May I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, we're going to move to proclamations and ceremonies? I don't know why this is working. Okay. Well, this is... Let's see here. This is new for me, so... Proclamation, our proclamation, we have two of them tonight, and they're rather lengthy, so I'm going to shorten them a little bit, although I hope the true meaning comes through. And the first one is... I have... The first one is for the National Crime Victims Rights Week. Could I ask some of our recipients of this proclamation, which would be Scott Story, Kelly Ritz, Commander Dave Pickett, and Lori Bratton? Thank you. Hi, Scott. All right, I will read the proclamation, and then if there's someone that would like to speak, that would be great. This is a designation of the week of April 16, 2014, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, 187 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers; and whereas, in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims; and whereas, the nation heeded this call to action and promoted victims' rights, initiative, effective, and compassionate victim services, and just compensation, and financial support; and whereas, now is the time to embrace new solutions that involve new partnerships with underserved communities and greater emphasis on learning what works in meeting victims' needs; and whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout the city, the state of Colorado, and America, to raise awareness of victims' rights. I therefore now, Joyce J., Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12, 2014, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And do I have a speaker?
The Wheat Ridge Police Department is proud to have an association with Victim Outreach, our victim advocate provider, for almost the last 30 years. And here tonight, a board member, Scott Story, will make a couple of comments regarding their work within the city.
Thank you, Dave. Victim Outreach is a small nonprofit. They're dedicated to assist victims through a very trying process, and that's criminal justice system. I myself have worked with victims as a district attorney, as well as now on the Board of Directors at Victim Outreach, and I can tell you uncategorically, Victim Outreach is an asset to not only the Wheat Ridge Police Department, but other police departments that it serves in the Jefferson County area. And what is really special about Victim Outreach is the dedicated volunteers, such as Kelly and Lori, that devote their time to assist victims through this process. So, on behalf of Victim Outreach, we are proud to accept your proclamation, and we thank you for recognizing Victim Outreach.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have another proclamation, an additionally important proclamation on human trafficking. I'd like to call Division Chief Joe Casa and Commander Dave Pickett. You get to do double, huh? Let me read the proclamation to you. Whereas, on February 1, 1865, Abraham Lincoln cited the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Once ratified, it officially outlawed slavery and involuntary servitude, except as punishment for a crime; and whereas, human trafficking is a modern-day slavery, a practice that is in direct opposition to our fundamental principles of liberty and human rights upon which our nation was founded; and whereas, human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, and other types of medical and physical abuse; and whereas, human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world today and is tied with arms smuggling as the largest, second-largest international criminal industry, falling only behind the illegal drug trade. Now therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim that the city of Wheat Ridge hereby wishes to raise awareness about the signs and consequences of human trafficking. I affirm this city's commitment to promote opposition to human trafficking in all forms and encourage support for the survivors of human trafficking, and to prosecute and end the demand for these victims to end the criminal activity and to restore freedom and dignity to its survivors. And now, Mr. Casa, I believe you're going to speak first?
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Human trafficking is a very, very complex crime that unfortunately, the city of Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, along with the various county law enforcement agencies, have investigated over the years. The cases that we have been directly involved in include young juveniles, and I think Commander Pickett can attest to the complexity and the issues that come up with those types of cases. As a result, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, along with other law enforcement agencies and the Jefferson County District Attorney's Office, collaborate in strategies of prevention, training, and investigation, and prosecution of these kinds of cases. When the first case happened in our city, I was really, frankly, taken back and really, really touched by the young juveniles that were involved in this particular case. And with the, I think, direction and leadership of Commander Pickett, our group of detectives have certainly gained a level of expertise to successfully prosecute these kinds of cases. So on behalf of the department, and in particular, the victims of these crimes, we gladly accept the council's proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Division Chief Casa and Commander Pickett. Did you want to say anything? Nope? All right. Thanks again.
Great. Thank you so much.
Our ever-alert clerk has reminded me that we did not have an approval of the minutes of the March 3 meeting. Was that it? May I have an...
Actually, my motion said both days.
Maybe I didn't repeat it properly?
Did you say both?
I said April, February 24 and March 3.
Are we good?
My mistake.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish to speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster... Let's see, it looks like we have some citizens out there, so... Okay. Well, I guess we have a few people to talk to. Okay. Which one is right? General Dendaite, this is citizens' right to speak. All right, we have several people who have signed up to speak. Typically, what we ask you to do, if you have come to speak before council, please stand and line up on the wall, on the side, so that we can bring you in. And when you speak before the council, please come forward, give your name and your address, spell your last name, and you each have three minutes. Wait, this is on... Yep. These are items on matters not on the agenda? Is that correct? Right? Okay. Come on, stand up and line up. Yeah, that's fine. You didn't actually sign up?
Yeah, I just...
Right, all right. Let's come one at a time, if you'll line up. Come on, step forward, the first one?
Name is Mark Potter, P-O-T-T-E-R. Live at 3395 Newland Street. I'd like to recommend to the council to put the road diet plan and funding before the voters in November. And that's it.
Usually, in these sessions, we do not allow applause, or cheers, or yays or nays. Just pretty much give your name and address, and if the witnesses or the audience will be quiet, that would be great. All right, next person, please?
Yes, my name is Diane Allen. I reside at 4455 Ingle Street, and I'm here about the construction of the park on 44th and Kendall. That activity has begun, and we're certainly looking forward to five or six months down the road when we can use it. However, I do have some concerns. The eastern boundary of the park is a mere, maybe two feet away, from an old decrepit boarded-up building that has been that way for at least four years. I'm afraid that there is a potential safety issue here if undersupervised kids get curious about that particular thing and go exploring. The building right next to it, on 44th and J, is an auto repair shop. It is operational. However, for probably approaching three years, old cars and boats are on that property, apparently being stored. I think that's also a potential safety issue. I understand there's a Colorado law that specifies that all vehicles in the state have to be currently registered and licensed, even if they are inoperable or being stored. So I wanted to point that out. These two properties on this maybe a quarter-block area, I think is the most blighted and, dare I say, ugly area in the entire city of Wheat Ridge. In the last issue of the... I believe it was in the transcript, it had an article about code violations, the top 10 code violations in the city. And three of them certainly apply to this situation: inoperable vehicles, outside junk, and deteriorating residences and buildings. I don't know if this is a park and recreation issue, or community services, or both. But... And then lastly, there's been a tremendous increase of traffic on 44th Avenue. I think due to what has happened to 38th. And then also, when the Walmart opened, that increased it substantially. Relative to that, there are people that are going west of Sheridan to look for housing, because the Highlands area is so expensive. And I think if they dare drive up, you know, 44th and see that, that it really could have a negative effect on the development and growth in the city. I have brought photos of the two buildings that I had referred to, which I will leave for council review. Actually, I would encourage you, or whatever appropriate committee, to drive by it, because the pictures turned out really good. It looks much worse in person than the pictures show. But I will leave those for council review, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Further, as you come forward, remember, we do ask that you stay within three minutes. Okay, our next person, please?
Kathy Tolman, at 4735 Reed. Tolman is T-O-L-M-A-N. I just wanted to share with you that I've spoken with quite a few people who are very confused about 38th Avenue, so I'm encouraging council to please put this issue on the November ballot so that citizens have plenty of time to learn about it and all of the implications. Whenever we are changing infrastructure, costs can rise dramatically. The 38th Avenue project is an example. Many people are worried about a tax increase because they feel that that will hurt Wheat Ridge businesses. So please do not spend any more money on this project without taking it to a vote of the people. It is our money, and we do need a voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vivian Voss, spelled V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. And I would like to speak tonight to the 38th Avenue wishes of city council to spend further money, time, and effort. I would like to read into record a nine-question survey that was done fall of 2013, open to all, and there were 318 received surveys back. The first question to answer any probable questions is, "Do you live in Wheat Ridge?" 91% lived in Wheat Ridge that answered this survey. Next was, "What is your age?", and the two highest volumes were in the 45 to 64 age, totaling 42% of the people that surveyed. Next question, "To what extent do you agree with the two-lane road diet on 38th Avenue between Chase and Uppam?" Strongly disagreed was the highest, at 54%. Strongly disagreed was the highest, at 54%. "To what extent do you agree with the back-end parking spaces on 38th Avenue?", which was the next question. Highest was strongly disagree, at 59%. "To what extent do you agree with the parallel parking spaces on 38th Avenue?" Highest was neutral, at 29%. "To what extent do you agree with the planters in the right-of-way along 38th Avenue?" Highest was strongly disagree, at 54%. "To what extent do you agree with city council spending, and at the time of this survey, $615,138 of taxpayer money on the 38th Avenue pilot project?" Highest percentage was 56%, strongly disagree. "Since the changes have been made to 38th Avenue from Chase to Uppham, how often do you drive this section of 38th?" 58% or less often. "Since the changes have been made to 38th Avenue from Chase to Uppham, how often do you patronize the businesses along 38th Avenue?" The highest percentage at 45% was less often. And I read this to you, just to reiterate the fact that there's a lot of concern, a lot of people do not like some of the choices that are being made and brought forward, and I would ask at this time that no more time, no more effort, and no more money be spent on this issue until you do bring it to a vote of the people on the November ballot with specific plans and specific financing that you choose to put for our vote. Thank you.
I'm Larry Vasos, that's a V as in Victor, A as in Adam, two S's like Sam, O-S. I live at 7085 West 32nd Place. I've been a resident and homeowner there for over 30 years. I'm strictly a Wheat Ridge patron in, in terms, I probably spend 95% of my income in Wheat Ridge for all aspects of, of my life. I feel that I have a pretty good idea of the pulse of what the people in Wheat Ridge think in all my conversations as I'm paying for all of the places. I, I work, get my income out of Wheat Ridge as well. I'm employed by a Wheat Ridge business. I want to speak about the road diet issue. I know there's many parts of the road diet. I only wish to address the four-lane down to two-lane parts of it. The rest of it, I'm not that concerned with, but I, I know that none of the, hardly any of the people in District 1 and District 2 support that idea of the two lanes, because 38th Avenue is a major, major east-west artery. I mean, you got 6th Avenue, you got Colfax, maybe 29th, you got 38th and 44th. These are heavy-traffic streets to get people from Denver to Jefferson County, and particularly when you've got the school flashing lights bringing traffic down to 20 miles an hour. You've got bumper-to-bumper traffic in both lanes, in both directions, backed up all the way past Wadsworth, all the way down to Sheridan Boulevard. It's almost impossible for us residents that live in District 1 and District 2 to get out onto 38th Avenue from any of the cross streets that do not have traffic lights. I, I, I think that the money that's been spent on it for the, for the striping, to reduce it down, and, and any of this future money, I think the lady that spoke before me, I think all of those statistics speak for themselves. So let's put, put, put it back to four lanes, so traffic can get through here. I don't think, most of the business owners I've talked to do not support it. I know the residents don't support it, so I don't think it's increased any foot traffic, and I'm strongly against spending any more money unless it is restriping back to four lanes. Thank you very much.
John Bandemere Jr., B like a boy, A-N-D-I-M-E-R-E, 3655 Chase. Gentleman said that he's been a resident for 30 years. I think I've been a resident for 75, so. Very normally don't come and make any comments, but it's really important that you really take a strong look and make sure that we, the people, have an opportunity to vote on this 38th Avenue situation. This is not, as a businessman, for many years in the county, it's tougher and tougher to make ends meet. And I, I want you to know that I, I was not happy as a resident with what's already been done with 38th. Can't do anything about that. But the other side of it is, is that, if you really, you know, we, we vote for you folks to represent us, and we really think that you need to represent us in a way that we feel that you're, that you care about how we operate. My wife will not drive down Chase Street and go onto 38th Avenue any longer. She doesn't use it. You can't get on. Now, I mean, that, like I said, that's already over, but the point is, is please take a strong look at that and make sure that that is something that goes to the people. Let, let us make the decision, not you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandemere.
Kristy Thompson, 3200 J Street, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. Before any more money is spent on 38th, I believe it should go to a vote. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Potter, P-O-T-T-E-R, 3395 Newland Street, and I also would like to propose that we put the 38th diet and budgeting on a vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Shepherd. It's S-H-E-P-H-E-R-D, and I'm at 7, Twilight Drive. What I like to do is, I brought out a picture, if I can hand that to you, if that's okay, for you to pass along? Great, thanks. I'll pick that up when I'm done. For those of you who don't know, in the Paramount neighborhood, a marijuana shop has just opened up, and the reason why I brought that picture is such you can see in the background, obviously what's in the background and how close it is to our park, and how this is impacting our neighborhood and our family. So in that picture is my son, something that I've been doing for the past three years with him, is taking him up to Paramount Park to play baseball. But what's different today is what's in the background. There's a shop that's selling marijuana right across the street from where we play ball. So that's going on in one view, and in the other view, which you can't see in that picture, is somebody standing on the street corner now, twirling the marijuana sign, advertising for this business. So while those two activities are bad enough, when the wind blows right, the smell of skunk weed from the grow operations is now coming across our baseball diamond. My wife and I are still trying to process what the heck just happened to our park and our neighborhood. And while what they're selling and where they're selling it is perfectly legal, I still wanted to come down here tonight to let you know that there's still a very real and emotional component to this, that we strongly believe that there's something wrong, that if I want to take my son to go play baseball at our park, that this is now the setting that we have to do it in. Thanks for giving me the time.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Thomas Slattery, 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I also want to support the concept of bringing the road diet to a vote of the people, and as a separate ballot item, this project is going to profoundly alter the fabric of East Wheat Ridge, not just 38th, but the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Therefore, I think the city needs a clear consensus of the voters before proceeding with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Matthew Lilly, L-I-L-L-I-E, 3990 J Street. Speaking from my age standpoint, as far as the 38th Avenue diet is concerned, my wife and I explored the city of Wheat Ridge, and we purchased our home almost about five years ago, and we've seen exponential growth as far as our home cost is concerned. I have good friends that have opened up businesses on 38th Avenue and have seen exponential growth as far as interest within Wheat Ridge and the surrounding areas, so I feel as though the diet is actually fulfilling what it needs to be done, and I find the aesthetics of 38th Avenue, as far as it goes, I'm just a block and a half off, and I feel no, no issue as far as traffic is, is concerned. Anywhere that you do look, there are school zones that do collect traffic, that is par for the course, but as far as my age and the amount of people that are moving into Denver and the surrounding areas, I feel as though 38th Avenue is a welcome mat as far as Wheat Ridge is concerned and our growth as a municipality. So I, I feel as though this is a good move, definitely put it to the voters, I definitely agree with that, but I feel as though the new level of age that's moving into Wheat Ridge is going to exponentially grow and flourish as far as, as far as Wheat Ridge's view of the future. So cheers to you, and thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you please ask somebody to turn off their cellphone? It's ringing out in the crowd.
Thank you. If, if someone has, has already turned off their cellphone, I hope, yes? We don't hear any more ringing, so that's a good sign.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge. Lived here for about 16 years. I'm a strong proponent of the advancements we've made as a city to attract new businesses. I think we have more than 30 new businesses who have been attracted to the 38th Avenue corridor by virtue of the changes we've made there. And like the, to me, young man, who spoke just before me, we have attracted a demographic that we're sorely lacking in, have been sorely lacking in previously, young families, young professionals who start their businesses here, many of them along 38th Avenue. I drive down 38th Avenue every day. I, on the weekends in particular, see large gatherings of, of groups at some of our, our businesses who have outdoor areas, and enjoying gathering as a community, to visit with each other, to patronize local businesses, to add to the tax revenues that the city enjoys, I believe, and potentially reducing what kind of increase we need to look at in terms of a sales tax revenue increase, which I would encourage you to support as a ballot issue in the fall. The traffic, maybe, you know, maybe you're losing 40 seconds as you move down that corridor. I don't think it's a huge impact in cha, in, in light of the change of the corridor. I think it's a great benefit to us. I, I appreciate it. I encourage you to pursue and finalize the corridor's advancement and changes. I think it's good for the city, and I appreciate it, and I encourage you in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Mucielli, M-U-C-I-L-L-I. I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge since 1972, seen a lot of stuff happen in the city.
Oh, could you give your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
2940 Webster Street, 7172 West 38th Avenue also. I own a, a business or a building on West 38th, right where the back-end parking is. I've opposed that, don't really like it too much. I'd like you guys to really consider getting a vote on this. It would be, I would say unlawful to spend that much money without letting all the residents know, let them at least, say, in the 38th Avenue thing. It would, I, I think it would be, it would be very bad if you guys didn't do that. People that live on the west end of town, coming through there, you know, it's, it's been tough. You can't make a left-hand turn. I live, you know, I have to go to my building on, every day, pretty much, I've been doing some work down there, and it's, it's a tough thing to get in and out of that over there. You know, I think the flow of traffic would be, it'd be beneficial to everybody if, if there's more cars coming through there. I mean, you know, people are going to come to your businesses one way or the other. If you offer a good product, you know, they'll be there. They're not going to care, you know? If they're going down 44th, they're not going to see your business. If they're going down 29th, they're not going to see your business anyway. So let them come through there. That's, that's my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Schmuckey, S-C-H-M-U-K-E, 6800 West 38th Avenue. I don't know what more I can say. We've had a lot of speakers in front of me talk about 38th Avenue, so obviously, I'm here to support at least taking this vote to 38th Avenue to the people. And my concern has always been about, not whether I like it or not, frankly, and Jerry knows this and others, I've always appreciated the effort that we're doing something to change 38th Avenue. That is a beautiful thing. I am concerned that the statistics show, whether I like it or not, the statistics show that it's not working. It's the only statistics we have, and that statistic of the, you know, we've all seen the survey, I was going to bring it up, and it's been quoted four or five times, there's nine copies of it here. We know that, on a secondary note, that the car counts down, which obviously concerns us as business owners who eat, think, sleep, dream, everything we can about how we make our customer experience better so more people come to 38th. But what more concerns me now, and I think all of you are probably members of it, is if you all subscribe to the Wheat Ridge Neighbors Facebook, the other social media sites, the feedback I'm seeing, and I don't even, I don't even get involved, because as a business owner, I don't want it to be appear as if we're trying to solicit. But the comments that I'm getting, and I'm not going to use their names, because I don't want these people harmed, but I'll quote you one. Honestly, because of the changes, I make a point to stay away from 38th Avenue. I go other routes, so I won't have to deal with a single lane. My parents, who also live in Wheat Ridge, stay, stay away from it as well. There aren't enough businesses on 38th for me to deal with the hassle of a single lane. I think the move was ill-advised, again, done in the hopes of Wheat Ridge could become the new Highlands, which is impossible. Now, her words don't concern me, but the fact that she's avoiding 38th Avenue does, and that should concern all of us. So, again, I'm not here to say that I like it or I'm not liking it. I'm here to say that I support bringing it to the people. If they love it, they're our customers, for a lot of us business owners, we will love it, we will get behind it. I'm just asking you to bring it to public vote.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jerry Nealon, N-E-A-L-O-N, at 6770 West 38th Avenue. Just want to say thank you. I appreciate city council's support on 38th Avenue. I think you guys have done an awesome job and showed some courage to actually do something. You know, I've been on the corridor, I grew up in Wheat Ridge, been on the corridor 35 years. Yeah, nothing's perfect, it really isn't, so I have to wait an extra 30 seconds to put, make a left-hand turn to go home at night. To me, it's well worth it, for the growth, the activity, the buzz, people talking about it, the interest in 38th Avenue far outweighs that. And, you know, I, I guess Tennyson Street is wrong. I guess Highland Square is wrong. I guess Arbada is wrong. City of Golden is wrong. It's trying to calm traffic, to attract outdoor cafes and businesses and the type of people that we want to see, and to support the people that are moving into this community, the younger families. There was a study done before this whole thing started about, you know, what Wheat Ridge needs to be a sustainable, growing community. This was step one, and it's now being implemented, and of course, it's not going to be perfect. But I'll tell you what, I, I'm thrilled to death with it. I think you guys are doing an awesome job, and I appreciate it. And, you know, one last thing on the, the vote, last I heard, this was a representative government, not a democracy. So you guys were elected to get some things done, not put it to the people, to the vote of the people, but if that's your case, I mean, that's fine, if you want to do it. I just figured it was a republic. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Chad Har, 7190 West 48th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. You know, I'm in support of the changes that are happening along 38th Avenue. You know, for so many years, for twenty-plus years, the city of Wheat Ridge has languished in several areas, one of them being in income. We went from eighty thousand dollars a year per income per household to lower than forty thousand dollars a year per household, while cities like around us, Golden, Lakewood, Arvada, and Denver, adjacent cities to us, actually exploded and did very well, attracted the type of citizens that we'd like to have here in the city of Wheat Ridge. And then one of the reasons is, is because we don't have the amenities in Wheat Ridge that we'd like to have, we don't have the lifestyle that we'd like to have, and I think 38th Avenue is a positive step in that direction. I know we've cited this survey that's been happening, and people have been up here talking about, but that was not a city survey that was put up. And also, the traffic is only costing you less than ninety seconds per the city's own records and in each direction. I drive 38th Avenue all the time, let's not kid ourselves. It does take me probably an extra ninety seconds to cross the street, or to make a left-hand turn, or thirty seconds, or fifteen seconds, but it doesn't really matter to me because I love the crosswalks for the kids now. Those should have been up years ago, it's a safety issue, you know? And I love the vitality. I know several business owners along 38th Avenue, I've done work for those business owners, and they're excited as can be. In fact, one of our newest establishments said they have had a record month this year in sales. Tax revenue is up on that corridor as well, which adds to the city as well. So I always ask, why is it some of these businesses aren't succeeding when we also know that the automotive tax revenue is up along the, automotive-related businesses, tax revenue is up along the corridor? So I think sometimes that we're fighting about an issue about traffic when we should be talking about an issue about vitality, tax revenue, bringing businesses into the city. So, that's all I had to say, and I keep applauding you for what we've been doing because the citizens have spoken and spoken on this issue. We've had tons of study sessions, we've had tons of meetings, we've had ton hall meetings, and the citizens have spoken for a long time on this issue, and we need to keep moving the city forward and making it a vitality-type of city, not where it's been as stagnant. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, that was quite a few.
Madam Mayor, I have a letter that, it's a very short note, that I've been asked to read. The, it's from a man in Wheat Ridge, and he said he's sorry, but he wouldn't be able to come in this evening, but he wanted to have this letter read. It's to the council. It says, "This is a small, beautiful town, wonderful community of smart, loving people. Do we want a small amount of people deciding the fate of a whole community? Before you spend five to eight million dollars of the people's money, don't you think that they should at least have that decision to make for themselves? Please let this be a true democracy and let the people vote for or against the 38th Avenue road diet. Thank you, John Fielding." And he lives in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. I think we can move on to the regular agenda items now. Is there, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's move on with the consent agenda. Kristy Davis, you were going to read that for us?
Thank you. I'd like to read the consent agenda. There are six items on this agenda, so I will go one by one on these items. Item A, approving a contribution in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand to Wheat Ridge 2020 for the purpose of funding the BUBL, and home improvement, HIP, so bubble and hip, revolving loan programs, and providing support to other Wheat Ridge 2020 core programs. Item B, motion to approve funding in the amount of forty-five thousand to the Wheat Ridge Business District Revitalization Incentive Grant Program for the fiscal year 2014. Item C, a motion, or item C to award ITB-14-03, 2014 Crack Seal Project to Coatings, Inc., Arvada, Colorado, in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, with a contingency amount of seven thousand, one hundred and twenty, and authorize the Director of Public Works to issue change orders up to the total of contract and contingency amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three, or five hundred and thirty dollars. D, award RFP-14-02 Natural Gas Suppliers to Centerpoint Energy Services, Inc., Denver, Colorado. E, award RFP-14-01 Police Vehicle Equipment and Installation Services for four vehicles to AV Tech Electronics, Inc., Wheat Ridge, woo-hoo, at the cost of eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eleven cents per vehicle, in a total amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. F, motion to, oop, not a motion yet, to award ITB-14-04 to Barbara and Sons Construction, Inc. of Broomfield, Colorado, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six, which includes a base bid and demo bid alternate with a contingency amount of nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars, and authorize the Parks and Recreation Director to issue change orders up to the total amount of one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars for the public, for the police department remodel project.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, do you wish to make a motion covering all of these items?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve on the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for a second. Since it's a consent agenda, I won't ask for discussion, and please pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number two, which is Council Bill Number 01-2014. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have to find my...
Find it.
Here. Let's see. Council Bill Number 01-2014 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6405-6409 West 44th Avenue from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood, case number WZ14-01/Lombardi. I move to approve Council Bill 01-2014 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6405-09 West 44th Avenue from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood. On first reading, order be published, public hearing set for Monday, April 14th, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. So this is first reading, we won't have any particular discussion or reports, and we'll move on to the vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Pull the council, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Let's move on to item number three, Resolution Number 19-2014, and that is Ms. Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Resolution Number 19-2014, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District, RTD, for the Tabor Street multimodal improvements from the I-70 North Frontage Road to Ridge Road. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge, a gold-line partner, has been selected to receive federal funding for access and safety improvements to Tabor Street from the I-70 North Frontage Road to Ridge Road through the Regional Transportation District and Denver Regional Council of Government Transportation Improvement Program. The funding will facilitate a project to widen and improve Tabor Street to provide bike and pedestrian access to the commuter rail station at Ward Road. The federal grant will provide seven hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars to fund the improvement project. RTD will administer the project's federal funding, and the city will be responsible for design and construction. Entering into an intergovernmental agreement with RTD is necessary to formally authorize the project. The IGA provides that the city finance the cost of the project with RTD reimbursement of one hundred percent of the costs, not to exceed seven hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Madam, is there a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-2014, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District for the Tabor Street multimodal improvements from the I-70 North Frontage Road to Ridge Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Is there any discussion on this? Thank you, Mr. Starker.
I had a question for Scott, perhaps. We, we're building bike lanes on here, does this look to be segregated bike lanes, or do you know what the character of those might look like?
Yes, Councilmember Starker, right now, until we really get into the design of it more specifically, but at this time, we're looking at on-road bicycle facilities along with a wider sidewalk behind the curve for pedestrians.
Thank you.
If I may ask a question, I noticed that right-of-ways were included, is that part of the cost involved, the acquisition of those?
Yes, the right-of-way is included in the cost estimate.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Could we please pull the council?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, and let's move on to item number four, Resolution 20-2014. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to introduce Resolution Number 20-2014, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and related documents in connection with the proposed redevelopment at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street. At issue on January 27th, 2014, council adopted a resolution approving a modification to the I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan. The resolution provides for Renewal Ridge to utilize tax increment financing for the redevelopment of a commercial property at the southwest corner of 38th Avenue and Kipling Street.
Oh, Mr. Goff, did you have some discussion for us?
Sure, just real briefly, as mayor and council are aware, the city and the urban authority are working with Developer MVG Development for redevelopment of the southwest corner of 38th and Kipling. It's getting critical, to the critical point of making some, setting some obligations for all parties. The developer is going to close on one of the major properties at the site April 11th, and they'll be obtaining their financing to do that, so they want some assurances from the city that we're moving forward and are going to meet our obligations also, as we discussed with City Council at a previous study session. So tonight's resolution does not officially obligate the city to anything, it just authorizes me, the city manager, to move forward with the documents that are required to come to agreement with the developer on this project, and those include a moral obligation pledge, development agreements, and also authorization to appropriate funds to contribute to the project.
Is a motion in order?
A motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 20-2014, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and related documents in connection with the proposed redevelopment at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street. Second?
We have a second by Mr. Fitzgerald. Is there further discussion or questions from council?
I have a question.
Mr. Urban?
Is it, in a resolution like this, is it appropriate or necessary to have any kind of sunset clause or other timetable on this?
Well, on this particular resolution, I'd advise no, because this resolution really directs the city manager to bring, you know, to negotiate and bring forward documents that are obligations of the city in one form or another. And if there were to be that discussion, I'd say you have that on the documents that sort of approve the deal itself, as opposed to get the city manager working on the deal.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Madam Mayor. We were provided with a revised copy of the ordinance 20 and Series 14. Can you briefly tell me what the change was in those two documents?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Starker, sorry about that. I wanted to mention that. We did receive a last-minute edit from the developer, and we felt we were okay with that change. The change is in the last whereas, where they basically added the language, "including without limitation thus the net proceeds of the loan and the city contribution shall be applied to the payment or reimbursement of three million dollars of eligible project cost." They just wanted that to be even clearer than I think the resolution stated, but I think Mr. Doll spoke to the attorneys on their side, and he can speak to this, too.
Yeah, that covers it. I felt that it was otherwise pretty clear, but I had no trouble with agreeing that that could be, additional assurance could be added in the whereas.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll, I have to read them separately, but I will read them both. Thank you, Mayor. Motion to appoint Lisa Hollenbeck to the Planning Commission representing District Four, term to expire March 2nd, 2017. At issue, there currently is a vacancy on the Planning Commission in District Four. Lisa Hollenbeck is a resident of District Three and has submitted an application to the Planning Commission requesting appointment. Councilmembers Wooden and Langworthy felt that Ms. Hollenbeck's background as a Realtor, her current college coursework in land use and urban development, and her prior involvement with the city of Wheat Ridge as a 2013 Civic Academy graduate set her apart from others. They also believe that the positives Ms. Hollenbeck would bring to the Planning Commission outweigh the fact that she resides outside the district. Therefore, Councilmember Wooden and Langworthy have requested that Ms. Hollenbeck be appointed to fill the vacancy term ending 3/2/17. Is a motion in order? Councilmembers Wooden and Langworthy are recommending that Lisa Hollenbeck be appointed to the Planning Commission representing District Four, term to expire March 2nd, 2017.
Motion carries eight zero.
And next?
I was just asking not to have any conversation, loud conversation during the, during our meeting tonight, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Motion to appoint William Gel to the Liquor Licensing Authority Board representing District Four, term to expire March 2nd, 2016. There currently is a vacancy on the Liquor Licensing Authority Board in District Four. William Gel is a resident of District Three and has submitted an application to the Liquor Licensing Authority Board requesting appointment. No applications were received from District Four residents, and this traditionally has been a difficult vacancy to fill. In 2013, the seat was vacant from March until October. Councilmembers Wooden and Langworthy interviewed Mr. Gel and felt the positives Mr. Gel will bring to the liquor board outweigh the fact that he does not reside in the district. Therefore, Councilmembers Wooden and Langworthy have requested that Mr. Gel be appointed to fill the vacancy term ending March 2nd, 2016. Is a motion in order?
Please.
I move to appoint William Gel to the Liquor Licensing Authority Board representing District Four, term to expire March 2nd, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
And our final item, number seven, Mr. DeTulio.
Thank you. My final seven is a motion to appoint Dan Grafford to the Order of Adjustment, Alkina, have a large vacancy term which expire on 3/2/16. Dan Grafford applied for the Building and Advisory Board in December of 2013, was appointed at that time. Councilmember DeTulio spoke to Mr. Grafford, and he expressed interest in certain Alkina on the Board of Adjustment. Is a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Starker, seemed to have lost your name tonight. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
That concludes our official business, can we have a report from the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Jay, just like to remind the public, citizens, that City Council and staff are having a town hall meeting. Maybe some of you are going to mention this, but on March 31, which is next Monday, at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center, we will start an open house at 6:00 PM, where we'll have, staff will have numerous exhibits and tables of information, and staff available to answer questions. And actual presentations will start at 6:30, so if you want to get there early at 6:00, you can have some time to roam the room and pick up some information. Then after the presentations are done, staff will stick around for another 30 minutes for an open house format, so hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, and city attorney matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Electoral officials matters, Mr. DeTulio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank all the folks that came in tonight, pro and con, on discussions about different issues in the city. I, you know, over the last couple of days, there's been some emails and lobbying for, to put the heightened density back on the ballot for the third time. We went back in 2009, it failed, and then the heightened density with a compromise passed in 2010. And so now, folks are asking if we go back to the voters a third time again, to remove the heightened density from the city charter completely. I guess there's pros and cons for that too, but I think that if we're going to do that, I would strongly encourage council to have a look at two or three ballot questions, one for the heightened density, one for 38th Avenue, road diet and its funding, and then a general revenue question for our voters to look at and consider. I was asked Saturday, would I consider it a public process? And I think the ultimate public process is when the voters have a chance to vote on something that large of an expenditure, similar to what we did back in the early 2000s, when we voted for the Rec Center, that was a $12 million expenditure. And a plan was presented to the citizens and a financing mechanism. And back at that time, it was a sunsetted half a cent sales tax, and we could look at something similar for 38th Avenue. But I think the compromise would be that all three of those would be considered by council, hopefully be put on the ballot in November, so our citizens can have the ultimate public process. And also, I wanted to say I enjoyed the retreat, working with everybody on Saturday.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, always glad to hear our citizens comment, talk before us, your voices are heard. In District One, driving around the district, I noticed that the Chase Street Drainage Project is underway, we're moving dirt at, what's the house? The Richards Hard Estate, right in the end of my tongue. And it looks like they're making good progress there, so hopefully we will continue on and get our underground piping and get those, that drainage problem solved, we have a number of drainage issues in the city. I think that we always need to be aware of how water flows in storms, we were fortunate this last year, and not having devastating floods like other communities in our state have had. But we are susceptible and have waterways that flow through our city, and we need to be vigilant about how we care for our stormwater. So I appreciate the citizens and the council approving the expenditure of this money in District One for this Chase Street drainage improvement, and I look forward to having it done, and I look forward to being able to work on other drainage and construction projects that talk to the safety of our citizens, so thank you very much.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we had over 16 of our residents take time out of their day to come down and voice their opinions to us on a variety of different issues, and I just want to thank them for taking that time, because it is difficult to take time out of your day to come down and speak, and want to encourage residents to continue to do that, because it does give us as council the information we need to be able to make decisions. I would like to move city staff to draft a council bill regarding the placement of the 30th Avenue design and funding on the November ballot. By placing this on the ballot, it would give a final resolution to a very divisive issue in the city. Whether you agree with how it's funded or not, the fate of 30th Avenue should be decided by a vote of the people. 6.5 million, or whatever the dollar amount is that's been tossed around, is too much money to be spent on one street without a direct mandate from the voters in Wheat Ridge. Council members, special interest groups, neighbors, have all fought too long and have been embroiled in a debate that is not productive and has not brought us any closer to resolving this issue. The time has come to stop talking and give this issue to the voters to act upon. I'd like to call this question, basically, and ask that we take that step to bring this to a ballot question and allow the voters to truly decide what they would like to see have happen on 38th Avenue, both a question regarding whether to move forward with it, and also a somehow combined question regarding how to pay for that improvement if it's decided to move forward. And I think by taking this action, we as council can confirm our role in the city by bringing issues to the voters and saying, what do you want to see have done? So can I get a second on a motion to direct staff to draft ballot language to take this next step?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, to draft language, to put this on the ballot, is that what's questioned? It's open for discussion at this time.
I'm assuming that your motion asks staff draft a ballot question and bring it to a study session for discussion with the council along with every other ballot question that may become forward?
I don't know that necessarily needs to be tied with other ballot questions, if that's more efficient, that's fine. But I think it's appropriate to ask that a ballot question language be drafted, and then if we can have two or three different funding mechanisms, whether that's a sales tax increase, whether it's, whatever the needed funding mechanism is to fund this project.
I think we're looking for a specific motion. For us, I mean, we need to have a specific motion for discussion. Do you have something specific that?
The motion would be to direct city staff to draft ballot language that would include both a funding mechanism and a question of moving forward on the final design of 38th Avenue.
And I second that, Madam Mayor.
I think we're premature on this, you know, we've gone out to our consultants in telegancy to bring us back some design work, to try to bring back and understand what the road section is. I think we ought to wait until we have some more specific information that gives us, that gives us what the character of the road looks like, what the ingress and egress out of the various businesses on 38th Avenue, how they will handle the curb cut realignment, how they will handle the traffic in and out, what the character of the street improvements look like, some visuals and some design specifics that we can show to the citizens, that we can understand ourselves, so that we can understand what we intend to build out there, if in fact, we go to build it. And I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse.
Further discussion? Yes.
Ms. Davis?
So I just want to follow up from our retreat this weekend too, because I do believe that that was a part of our discussion at our retreat, was to work with some other possible cities, work with some folks that are used to drafting ballot language, and that could be for lots of different things, for the road, for, if it be 38th, if it be the general question of funding and revenue sources. So I just feel like that was a, that we were going to work with some consultants and some other cities on how they've been successful on moving forward with some, honest to say, tough ballot questions. And so I believe, and it was more than just one question, it was more than 38th, it was the funding, it was how the, all of the funding would be used, not just for funding for 38th, but funding for other city projects. So I would not support this, only because it was something that we were going to get some help from some other cities and outside sources to help us construct a plan that would be successful and transparent, and all those buzzwords we're using right now, to our city, and also to really outline what we're wanting as council and represent that as well. So I'd rather hold off on that motion.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I would agree that this is premature, we don't have the report back from the consultants, as Bud said. We haven't voted on it yet, and to a certain extent, we're mischaracterizing this in the conversations that we've had in this meeting. This is not about back-end parking, and it's not about the road diet, it's about the soul of Wheat Ridge, it's about our step forward, creating a whole new vision of what we are as a city. And so I think we're not quite ready yet to have a vote on this.
Any further discussion? Mr. Pond?
I agree with some of the comments that this is premature, specifically premature to direct staff to take time to draft language without all of the information necessary actually to draft that language. So I think there may be a time when this is appropriate, but I don't believe that it is now. There's a lack of information that would be necessary to actually draft that language and make it meaningful to us. When that time comes, I think we can readdress this issue.
Is there any other discussion before I repeat with others?
I just would, I mean, everybody said kind of everything that I'd, so I agree, I'm not, at this point, ready to make a decision to put that ballot on there, we don't really even know, I mean, we haven't even gotten back with the cost, so a ballot measure of this nature would require that number, because otherwise, we're just making a guess as to what, and I don't want to go to the people with a guess of the amount, I want to know what it's going to cost.
Mr. DeTulio.
I seconded the motion, so we could get a discussion, and I think that was good, to hear everybody. I tell you the truth, I seconded, and I still agree that we should go to the voters, but I think it is premature. I have to agree, actually, with Mr. Starker on this one, and I had mentioned that earlier to Mr. Urban. I think that if we have a plan that comes back from the consultant, and then we'll have a more solid cost, then we can draft that motion up if we go to the voters. But I think that the plan's supposed to be back in June, according to the city staff. I still, I 100%, if we're going to move forward, that I do support going to the voters, but I think at this time, we could hold off for a few more months and wait and see what kind of project we get back from the consultant. So I'm going to vote no on this, to be on the prevailing side, so if we have to reconsider it later, I'll be able to reconsider it. But, because I know it's going to fail, it doesn't take a crystal ball to know what's going on, that's fine, you know, that's politics. But I'll vote no for it tonight, but I do support going to the voters, and when we get back more information, like Mr. Starker had said. In the spirit of compromise, I agree on this, waiting for a few more months.
Madam Mayor. I would say that directing staff to devise language and giving council several funding options, to then pick from that funding option, to then be able to plug that information into a ballot question, this issue deserves the leadway, the ramp-up time that we need to be able to get good ballot language structured. And we can plug in whatever that final design or that number might be into that language as we move forward, but I think it's appropriate to give this as much time. We're giving a significant amount of resources and time to the final design for 38th Avenue, but the most important aspect of this is the public input and the vote of the people as to whether they want to see this go forward. And I think that deserves an equal amount of staff resources to make sure that we have good language and, no time like the present, just get this going, and it can be plugged in down the road.
Are you withdrawing your first motion?
No.
All right, so your first motion was ballot language, all right. Can you, could you give us, so we know exactly what we're voting for, so that it's in the record, what we're voting for? We need that exact language.
What I have is a motion by Councilmember Urban to have staff draft a draft ballot language that would include design and funding mechanism for 38th Avenue.
Yes.
Is that sufficient? All right. Are we ready for the vote then?
Or something like that.
Please poll the council.
Okay. Please vote again. Motion fails one to seven, with council members Wooden, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, Davis, Starker, and DeTulio voting no.
Okay, we were going on with commentary, are we, do, let's see. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, I just want to thank the members of council for the retreat this weekend, I thought it was some good productive conversations. And just to, I know there was requests from, at other study sessions, as far as, you know, wanting information on that, so we're looking at possibly doing a summary for that. But some of the things we talked about, it did include, of course, 38th, did include some of the housing projects and how to encourage our, the growth of our housing stock, the improvement of our housing stock and the diversity of housing and also our community and neighborhoods, how to also create a place for our neighbors. And then also, it also did include some of the funding mechanisms, and how are we going to fund some of the things that are going on, great things that are going on in Wheat Ridge. So we did talk about all of those, so it was a great retreat, I think people were open and honest, and I appreciate that from everyone. The other things I want to just talk quickly about is some of the things that are going on with Renewal Wheat Ridge. I don't know, I do drive 38th every day, back and forth, and I don't know if you guys all noticed Perrin's Row, that they're doing some significant groundbreaking now, just not us with our little shovels. So, no offense to all of us that were there, but there's some great, it looks like things are moving over at Perrin's Row, and I do think we did discuss that one of those units have been sold, so that's exciting. And of course, then we've got the work going on that's on 38th and Kipling with Renewal Wheat Ridge and Sprouts and Starbucks, and so we've got a lot of great things going on with Renewal Wheat Ridge, so I did want to bring that up. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Allen, who came and spoke of the property right next to Kendall, because it was interesting, because Patrick and I just had a discussion about that property this weekend, or last week, so that was nice too, and I want to thank her for that. The other thing I want to do is thank the folks for their emails that they've sent to me, I appreciate your participation in your comments, and as much as I can respond back and get you information, I'm happy to do that, so I want to thank you for that. And lastly, I encourage everyone to go to the town hall on Monday, we're going to have an opportunity for people to have an open discussion and questions, and I encourage people to come and also be respectful of everyone, including the council, at this time and others, so thank you.
I just wanted to address something that Ms. Davis mentioned, I would agree about that property on 44th, and I would encourage either Urban Renewal or the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, and they may need some funding from the city to see if they could actually acquire that property and scrape, and then remarket it out to the private sector, because it is an ISO, and we've heard about that for years. So if Urban Renewal or the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority could look at getting a loan or some funding from the City of Wheat Ridge, I would encourage that greatly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps just repeating what is said, but I do want to thank everyone who showed up at council chambers tonight, and encourage a continuation of the input and activation of our citizenry that we've seen over the last year or so in our elections, in our study sessions, and in our council meetings, thank you for your participation. And I also am receiving more outreach in the form of emails and phone calls, I encourage all of that, and I will continue, I'm sure all of us will continue to work hard to listen to what's happening out there and try to do the right thing as we move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo this. I appreciate everybody coming to talk to us. It's important for us to hear what people have to say. And I also have been receiving a lot of phone calls and emails, and I'm really happy to say that people are getting excited about the changes that we're making in Wheat Ridge, and I'm really delighted to see that. And after the good thing, the downer, the property on 44th, that relates to the code issues that we had big discussions about, code enforcement issues that we had big discussions about, so I just want to make note that that's also a code enforcement issue.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd just like to, and I saw this this weekend as I was driving through a neighborhood, and someone had those little green men out there to protect, to warn people that there's kids on our streets, and as the weather gets warmer, more kids are going to be on our streets, and our side streets aren't meant to be highways, they're meant to be, you know, 30, 25, 30 miles an hour, so if you can be out there, just kind of watch for the kids. And then another little bit of information, the Kite Flight Festival is coming up, April 26th. We will be doing, we have three places that we're doing classes at. We're doing one at Cataluma Chai, April 8th, I believe April 8th. We have one at Teller Street Gallery, April 9th, and we have a full Saturday at the Active Adult Center on April the 15th. The Cataluma Chai and the Active Adult Center are $7 per class, per person, and Teller Street Gallery is a little bit more, but they're going to do a more artistic piece with their kite. Did I get the, okay, good. So if you're interested in taking, getting out there and decorating a kite, you can go to www.kiteflightfestival.com, or you can go to the Teller Street Gallery website. They have their classes listed there, and you can go to the Wheat Ridge Rec Center Guide, and we have our kite classes listed there as well. Thank you.
I also want to echo many of the comments that people have made. I've gotten emails and phone calls, and they've all been positive, all from people that are very excited about what's going on in our city. They're glad to be here, and in fact, one person said, "How can I help?" And it's so exciting to know that we have citizens that are positive about the city, they're excited about what's going on, and they want to be here and they want to be involved, and that's so exciting, and I really appreciate it. And the other thing I'd like to mention is the Food and Film Series. Their last film is this Wednesday at the Active Adult Center. It is at Potluck also, and if you need more information, you can go to the Wheat Ridge 2020 website. Thank you.
I'll have to say, since I was getting a lot of email, I thought, wow, I'm pretty popular. I find out everybody's getting emails. Anyway, it's been great to have a lot of citizens writing and letting us know how they feel, sometimes not, but I think that's about it for tonight. Are we, am we ready to close the meeting? The meeting is adjourned, we do, yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Janelle, do you have something for us tonight?
Not for you, but I, well, it kind of is for you. I'm aware of a children's theater group that is in desperate need of a permanent home, and I just wondered what the status is on the Fruitdale School. Is that owned by the foundation now?
It's owned by the Housing Authority. Wheat Ridge Housing Authority still owns.
Okay, so they should talk to them.
There is. There's actually an RFI out on the street right now requesting proposals for, from prospective tenants or developers that want to use the building, so they can, should be on the city's website, where they can contact Sally Payne in the Community Development Department.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? We're done? All right, let me officially close the meeting, then.